So wait, and there it is, six o'clock exactly. All right. Uh, good evening. Uh, I'm calling the meeting to order at six o'clock PM. Uh, the School Board of the City of Manassas will meet tonight, Tuesday, June ninth, two thousand and twenty, for a special meeting. The meeting will be conducted virtually as authorized by Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven oh eight point two A three due to the restrictions on public gatherings issued by the state and federal government. We will start this meeting as we usually do with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So first, let's take a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a roll call first, please, Ms. Garza.
Chairman William.
Here.
Vice Chair, woman, Kiefer.
Here.
Damaria.
Here.
Mr. Albrecht. Mr. Albrecht. I'm gonna go ahead and skip Mr. Albrecht for now. Mrs. Seaver.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mrs. Stevens.
Here.
Okay, we're gonna check on Mr. Albrecht.
I need him, we kinda need him for this next thing we're doing, so.
Yes.
Anybody wanna tell me jokes? You wanna sing?
And so they might be inappropriate.
Oh, yes. No.
Be careful what you ask for. It's been, uh, you know what, uh, eight years to know better.
Yeah.
No. Twelve years, almost.
Well, it's always nice to see all you virtually, at least we can see each other's faces, it's all kinda cool, even though I do this like twelve hours a day. Still a blessing to be able to do it, because a lot of folks can't, so I have no complaints at all. And for those of you who don't know, we are waiting for Mr. Albrecht, because we have some special guests on, um, who have something to say about Mr. Albrecht. And let me see my screen. Scroll down. Um, for those of you at School Board who don't know, we have, uh, Mr. Rodney A. Jordan, he's the BSBA President. And thank you for being here, sir. And I see Samantha Bossman here as well, thank you for joining us, it's good to see you both also.
Thank you for having us.
No problem, and you know Mr. Albrecht very well, so I'd like to make an entrance.
Some things never change.
I was gonna say, this is a very easy way to visit school board meetings, might have to pick up on this a little more.
Yeah. And it's cool too, because you can kinda see how different jurisdictions, you know, conduct their meetings.
Yeah, exactly. Thanks for having us and setting this up.
No problem, um, Mrs. Garza did all the, all the legwork, and I thank you all for being considerate enough to take the time out of your schedules to do this, we really appreciate it. Hopefully, Mr. Albrecht's not on the golf course somewhere. But while we're waiting, um, you may have heard the governor issued something today, which is a hundred and twenty-some odd pages. I don't know if you had a chance to read through a hundred and twenty-some odd pages yet, but, uh, I heard it's interesting reading. And I'm getting a call now. Lifetime TV. Give me my microphone.
Mr. Williams. I, I just got a hold of Scott, he's, uh, he thought it was seven, big, probably the confusion of the second meeting.
Okay.
So he is turning his computer on now.
Oh, he's turning his computer on now. Um, Dr. Newman, do you wanna go first with your presentation, then we'll circle back to Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that. Okay, as you heard, um, Mr. Albrecht is signing on, so we're gonna reverse the order. Um, if our guests don't mind indulging us for a minute, Dr. Newman has a quick presentation, then we'll get to, um, Vice President, well, Vice President, so the FBA President, Jordan, so, uh, Dr. Newman, if you're back in the room, if you could go forward, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Um, we went through a process to hire our executive director of Student Services. Uh, we had a clear, um, selection with that with Dr. Eric Brent. Uh, he came out of every stage of the committee as the number one candidate. Uh, we're very blessed and humbled to have him join our family. Uh, he has the past two weeks jumped headfirst into his duties. Uh, just yesterday, he had a conversation, a transition conversation with Dr. Stone. Uh, both parties let me know that it was a very productive meeting, so we're very excited about that. Uh, I'm gonna read just a little summary of his, uh, bio, and then just talk to you a little bit about what, uh, what we found throughout the reference check process, uh, the things that were said about him. Uh, Eric Brent, in addition to being the region executive principal at Fairfax, he has thirty-three years of public education experience. While at Fairfax County and Prince William County School System, he served sixteen years as an awareness aide, coach, club sponsor, teacher, school counselor, director of Student Services, and assistant principal. He also served eleven years as principal in Fairfax and Prince William. In Fairfax, he led the school of West Pretomi High School and Mount Vernon. And in Prince William, he was the principal at Forest Park High School. Chairman Williams, you're gonna love this part. He holds a Bachelor of Science degree in marketing from James Madison. He has a Master's of Art degree in student personnel services from Virginia Tech, so we're gonna put one in the Virginia Tech column. Uh, he has a certification in school administration from University of Virginia, so we're gonna put one over here for, for UVA. And then we're gonna break the tie. So he has his Doctorate of Education in Educational Leadership and Policy Studies from the Virginia Tech. So he is a two-to-one hokey. So we are very happy to have another hokey in the family. Uh, he is married to the wonderful Miss Diana, um, Brent, who is also a fabulous educator in Fairfax, and it's gonna take a little work, but we're gonna work on getting her a part of this family as well. Uh, they are the proud parents of Eric Junior and Daniel. His favorite quote is, educating the mind without educating the heart, there's no education at all. When we called, uh, to check his references, you heard terms of professional. Putting kids first. Dedicated to the profession. Everything that we saw throughout the interview process, we were getting, uh, confirmation from the individuals that were on his list as a reference, and then those that were not. So at this time, I would like to introduce to the board, uh, you've seen his references, and you went through the process of approving them, but now I would like for you to have the opportunity to hear from him. So, School Board of Manassas City, I'd like to introduce to you Dr. Eric Brent.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to thank, well, I would like to thank Chairman Williams, members of the School Board, Dr. Newman, and his staff for before to be the opportunity to join the Manassas City. For sharing my knowledge and my experience, and also taking advantage of the opportunity to learn with and from the staff and students of NCPS, as well as work with and for teachers. We all know and understand the importance of our approach and how we address critical issues in education. And so I am indeed looking forward to that challenge. And I cannot thank you enough for this opportunity to work with NCPS in this capacity and help each of you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Dr. Brent, welcome to the family, we are very happy to have you and look forward to working with you going forward in the future, and thank you for the introduction, Dr. Newman. And I'm looking for Mr. Albrecht, and I do not see him yet checked in. Any update, Mr. Damaria?
No, sir, I'll try again. I'll be really nice to him, too.
If our guests don't mind holding on for a couple more minutes, uh, I don't wanna hold you up, but I, I do, I would like to have Mr. Albrecht receive this honor, so, um, I'm going to suggest that we continue on with the agenda, uh, there's no citizens' comments, and the next item should be relatively quick, the consent agenda, may I have a motion, please?
Are you getting mine? Sir, I, hold on one second, I, uh, moved that the City of Manassas accepted consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Damaria, second by Ms. Stevens, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the consent agenda as presented. I'm all in favor. All opposed. We have to have a roll call vote, because we have a video vote, so, um, Mrs. Garza, may you please do a, a roll call vote, please?
Chairman Williams.
Hi.
Vice Chair, woman, Kiefer.
Hi.
Mr. Damaria.
Yes.
Mrs. Seaver.
Was there an attachment to the personnel, um, item?
Yes. It's on bottom on the executive content.
I vote yes, then.
Um, I, that was added today. Um, Mr. Albrecht. Mrs. Williams.
Hi.
Mrs. Stevens.
Hi.
Thank you very much for the vote, um, the, the odds have it six-zero, the consent agenda motion has passed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Albrecht was trying to get onto the closed session at seven o'clock. He is, should be, he should be on any second, but just remember his age, so nobody make fun of him, uh, once he gets on.
No comment. Have Mr. Jordan and Ms. Bossman join our board, they've given you for so long, you know? Hopefully, he is getting on soon. I see the screen changing, I see an essay. Ah, sir. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. We're very glad to see your face, so President Jordan, I think you have something to say?
Yes. Uh, Chairman Williams and members of the School Board, uh, my name is Rodney Jordan, uh, President of the Virginia School Boards Association, I'm also joined by Samantha Bossman, the Director of Communications and Board Development for the Virginia School Boards Association, and I am so honored to be here today to, uh, present a resolution recognizing the service of Mr. Scott M. Albrecht, uh, for his work on behalf of the Virginia School Boards Association. And if you all will indulge me, I would like to read the resolution, then just have a couple of comments, and then if, uh, Ms. Bossman would like to add anything, we would like to do that as well. The resolution reads as follows. Whereas Scott M. Albrecht has served as a dedicated member of the Manassas City School Board since July one, two thousand, and whereas Scott M. Albrecht served as a member of the VSBA Board of Directors in a variety of roles, including president, president-elect, past president, member of the Executive Committee, regional chair, at-large member, chair of the legislation, legislative position slash federal relations committee, and member of the Task Force on Virtual Learning. And whereas Scott M. Albrecht served as a member of the VSBA Insurance Supervisory Board, vice chair in two thousand and eleven, representative to the VSBA Board of Directors in two thousand and twelve, and as a member of the VSBA Task Force on Insurance Services in two thousand and thirteen. And whereas Scott M. Albrecht represented Virginia on the national level by serving as a delegate and attending the National School Boards Association Annual Conference, whereas Albrecht's strong passion and commitment as a leader, supporter and advocate of the students of the Commonwealth of Virginia is admirable and commendable. And whereas Scott M. Albrecht has made many contributions to the success of the Virginia School Boards Association, and now therefore be it resolved, recognizes Scott M. Albrecht for his leadership and contributions he has made to the children of the Commonwealth in his roles as a school board member and as a valued member of the Virginia School Boards Association. Signed by me, Rodney Jordan, VSBA President, on behalf of the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, VSBA Board of Directors. So first, it's like to applaud Mr. Albrecht on that. And, and then I'd just like to personally say that this is the first opportunity I've had to do such an honor on behalf of the Virginia School Boards Association. For me, it's very fitting to be able to do that for Scott Albrecht, who has served as a mentor to me, a guy that I learned so much from him, uh, uh, in my own stewardship and participation as a member of the VSBA. Uh, he's always been one to call it straight, and I've always appreciated his candor, and I'm sure you all know what I mean, as, uh, part of the, the board there. So the same way that he has brought, I'm sure, uh, candor and humor and straightforwardness, uh, to your board, he also brought that to, uh, the VSBA Board, along with his compassion and passion, uh, on behalf of the children of the Commonwealth, so just wanted to, uh, present this to you, Scott, on behalf of the board. It's good seeing you again, and thank you so much for all your years of service on behalf of the VSBA.
Rodney, thank you, and I genuinely appreciate it, and I hope, uh, I taught you some good things, I'm sure I taught you some bad things as well. Uh, we all do learn from each other, and it has been twenty years, and it'll end up being twenty years and six months of a lot of fun. Uh, it's really been a pleasure, and I, I think we all understand, and I'm sure you and the VSBA understand the challenges that we're gonna be facing, public ed's gonna be facing in the next couple of years, and I know with the leadership of people like yourself, Gina, um, will be in good shape.
Thank you so much for that, and we're also honored to have, uh, your chairman, uh, actively involved on, uh, on, on many committees now as well, so, uh, Manassas continues to be, uh, uh, well, well, well represented, so, uh, uh, Samantha, are you there?
I'm here.
Any, uh, any final words you wanna offer before we allow them to get back to their business?
No, thanks for letting us take over, Scott, you didn't think we'd get you out of this, so thank you for all of your hard work and, um, and everything that you do.
All right, so Chairman Williams and, uh, and the board, and your superintendent, and all those present, uh, thank you again, and for any members of the community that may be watching as well, we just want you to know from a VSBA perspective that, uh, Scott Albrecht has represented you well, uh, and represented the Commonwealth well, and we just thank him again for all his service, uh, to the VSBA. Thanks, thanks again. Thanks again, and Samantha, you see what happens when you're not here to keep my calendar straight.
Thank you, President Jordan, and thank you, Samantha and Bossman, um, I've seen a lot of you lately, Mr. Jordan, so I'm sure I'll, some more, uh, other meetings we have, and Ms. Bossman, you're incredible, you do great work with the VSBA, and, uh, we truly appreciate your time and energy, so um, you're free to stay on if you'd like, but you're also free to go, I'm sure you have other things to do. Uh, we appreciate you, thank you very much. And we can talk about Mr. Albrecht again, as we get to our comments later, uh, especially Mr. Jordan, I'm sure he has a whole list of things to mention, but, uh, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, our discussion agenda. First item on our discussion agenda is policies. Um, Mrs. Kristen Kiefer, Vice Chairwoman, will present the following policies that are revised, added, or retired, so the floor is yours, Mrs. Kiefer.
Thank you, can you all hear me okay? Okay. Uh, good evening, I just first wanted to, um, thank in particular Elba, who really keeps us on track with the VSBA, uh, policy updates, um, as well as the, the staff who puts so much time in reviewing them before they even come up to us in the committee. Uh, much appreciate it. Uh, let's go around, we actually, uh, looked at forty-five policies with another, um, a go-around coming apparently this week for us to, to look at some more, so uh, it's been, uh, been a lot of work, but really good work done, um, ten sections of our policies have been looked at. Um, I will just kinda do an overview, there might be a couple that we wanna just kinda call out a little bit, um, to make sure you're all aware, if you didn't get a chance to review some of the changes. So among the forty-five policies, um, fifteen were reviewed, but no revisions made. Um, eight were updated simply for some of the legal or cross-references that we needed, no substantive changes. Um, one was, uh, deleted, because there was a lot of overlap to another policy. And then one was sort of updated, just to kind of get rid of some duplication as well. Which leaves twenty-one policy changes, um, the majority were related to language changes, uh, just, you know, pronoun changes, um, other kind of grammatical things, simplicity sake. Um, there were a few, um, that I just wanted to, to call out to the board's attention and to the public's attention. Um, and I know Mrs. Stevens can, um, jump in as well, she's been involved, very involved with reviewing these. Um, so one was related to the, um, advisory committees to the board. Um, in general, Manassas City has listed specific advisory committees that we decide to, uh, implement. Um, what we chose to put forward to you all is to take out the specific listings of those specific advisory boards for this reason alone, just to give us some flexibility. Um, you know, we might decide, or the superintendent may recommend another advisory group, we would then have to go back and amend the policy, so um, between Mrs. Stevens, and I know Mrs. Seaver also on this committee has reviewed all of these, and in total, we just couldn't all meet together at once. Um, just recommend that we just kinda keep that more general, so that's, that's one, uh, key one that I wanted to call out. The other was related to admission of, of non-public school students, um, as well as, um, you know, sort of a home instruction policy. The only differences, um, there were that the ROTC program, uh, will be open to homeschool children, uh, moving forward. Um, so that is just, uh, one change for everyone to be aware of. The other, and, and I see Mr. Hawkins here, hi Andy, uh, related to food services. Um, there was, uh, we decided to modify this one from Manassas City. Um, the reason being in the language there was, if there's a balance of fifty dollars for meals not paid, um, that we would not allow any more charges for students. Um, we as a division have made a decision that we don't wanna put that balance amount there. Uh, we wanna make sure our kids are well-fed and performing well in school. Um, so that is a change to, to that policy, um, that's modified, we just struck that particular piece of it. Um, another was related to remediation recovery, um, and what that is, is basically the way it was worded before, uh, was a very SOL remediation-specific. Um, they've kinda taken the SOL language out of that, um, to broaden it more, uh, just because the state of SOLs in this moment is, is a little tricky. Um, and it also allows K through twelve to participate in general remediation, so again, it's just a kind of simplification, uh, allows us a little bit of, of flexibility, um, in interpretation. Um, the one that we actually did ask our legal to look at, because we just wanted to make sure from a liability standpoint, the way we were reading one was policy KKA, it was related to service animals. Um, it's more lenient in terms of getting, allowing the service animals and what you do to get into the school with them. Um, we wanted to just ensure the way it read that the liability, if for some reason, God forbid, uh, the service animal um, acted out and harmed anybody or did damage to school property, that that liability would remain with the handler, not the school system. And we have confirmed that is the case, um, and this is part of a law that we sort of have to now uh, put into place, which is fine, but we did do some double-checking there. Those were the main ones, other than the school year and days, which is policies ICID. Um, ours is slightly different, just because we have the joint regional school, um, days and coordination, a number of days. Um, so we just put that language in there as well. So those were the key changes, Mrs. Seaver, Mrs. Stevens, or, uh, Mrs. Garza, if I misspoke on anything, please feel free to, to chime in here.
Um, Ms. Kiefer, no, you were quite accurate in describing the changes that were made, so thank you.
And just in terms of the next step, Mr. Chair, this will be put up for the board's full vote at the, uh, six-twenty-three special meeting.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Kiefer, very good presentation, are there comments or questions from other board members about, um, policies that were mentioned?
I got one.
Yes, please, go, yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, my question is on the, your comment on the ROTC program. I believe the way the policy, or I thought the way the policy was written is, because we're very generous in how we apply it, is that we allow homeschool students to engage in anything that does not cause a problem with VHSL. Certainly ROTC wouldn't, I was just wondering if there was just a nuance that happened to be in there, or were there other kinds of things like that?
So I know that Dr. Stone and Dr. Saunders, um, are on, I don't know, I think they're on, I saw them. Um, I wanna just yield to them to get the specifics on that, are you all?
Yes. And the thing with, um, ROTC is that it was added by the SBA specifically, um, to allow for homeschool students to participate.
And you do, you are very generous and do allow, uh, any of our homeschool students to participate in many things for the school division. Um, this is just something that they've put in specifically, um, related to the junior ROTC program.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stone.
Thank you, Dr. Stone.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, what, uh, Mr. Albrecht said is true, other than the fact we, we do allow, we are very generous, but, um, if it does, if it gets in the way of VHSL, we can't allow that, or if it causes us to add another teacher. I wanna make it clear that, you know, if, if, if we go over the limit on, we don't wanna put another teacher in place in order to accommodate a homeschooler. Um, so if it doesn't cost us any large amount of money, we do it, other than that, I don't think we would do it if, if, if we had to add a teacher.
Thank you, sir, good point. Staff should keep that in mind. Any other comments or questions? If not, I guess we'll be on the agenda, um, next time, action agenda, and thank you very much, um, great synopsis, and thank you, Ms. Stevens and Ms. Seaver for assisting with that, and Mr. Garza, as always, thank you for your hard work with this, we appreciate it. And, uh, I guess, um, Mr. Hawkins, uh, Dr. Saunders, and Dr. Stone were instrumental as well, so thank you for your help. so thank you for your help. The next item on our agenda is, um, old business COVID-nineteen, which is actually kind of old business end of business, uh, COVID-nineteen update at M C P S, um, Dr. Newman will take it from here and go forth, so Dr. Newman, floor is yours.
Before I turn it over to Dr. Stone, I want to give you one great update, uh, we officially ended the nineteen-twenty school year, uh, I know Mr. Albrecht will be interested in this, uh, of the close to eighteen-hundred laptops that we, uh, distributed throughout this virtual process, we were able to get all but two-hundred-and-sixty-four back, uh, Mr. Barrett and his staff, who worked with the principals, uh, to get those back, uh, I think considering with the, the amount that was, uh, put out for distribution, I think we did a great job of bringing that, today we received at three o'clock, uh, documents from the Department of Education, as well as the governor's, uh, presentation on reopening schools, uh, Task Force itself will be diving into those documents, but tomorrow at five, a three-hour summit will take place. Mr. Hawkins, um, Dr. Saunders, and Dr. Cramp himself will be representing Manassas City, will be, um, in a summit with Prince William, Manassas Park, Fairclax, Loudon, uh, Falls Church, Alexandria, and Arlington, I believe, uh, other divisions, and we're all going to put our heads together, uh, try to come up with a plan that's safe, that we can educate as many of our students as possible in the school building, um, at the end of the Task Force work, I'm not going to say that, um, it's impossible, because nothing is impossible, but it's going to be very unlikely that we'll start in August with one-hundred percent of our kids, so I don't want anyone to think that, uh, that could happen, uh, so we're looking at different options, uh, as we send the message today to, uh, our staff and to our school community, and we'll be updating them as, uh, the plan is developed, making sure that, again, they are well-aware of what we're doing, the plan is to have a Task Force work done July third, and for the board to approve a plan for opening at the first meeting of July, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Stone.
So good evening Chairman Williams, Vice Chairwoman Kiefer, Dr. Newman, um, I'm very happy to be reporting on the social emotional support that our, um, teams have been providing to all of our students through the closure, just before I start, uh, Dr. Brent, I think you are still back there, I just want to welcome you to Manassas City, and I'm looking forward to you doing amazing things for our students, um, Alba, I think you are advancing the slides, so we are going to go ahead and move forward, so we do have a really amazing team, school counselors, school psychologists, a school social worker, uh, division intervention specialist, and a student services coordinator, they have worked really hard through this process, and as we switched quite quickly to a virtual setting, they still realized they needed to be interacting with their families, helping those students, um, move forward in a very different time for them, as they were in, um, the, not only the school closure, but staying inside, uh, for for much of the time, so all of our school counselors have worked to provide a variety of video lessons that are available to all students on Schoology, things like anxiety, coping distress, um, kindness, self-care, conflict resolution, even internet safety, because we knew students were spending a lot more time on the internet, um, there were many more lessons that are available, um, for students to access, and the great thing about Schoology is that students log in with their school account to access those lessons, so counselors can check and see what students have logged in, and for those who had not been logging in, school counselors were reaching out, um, with individual phone calls to check in with the student and their family, to see if there were any, um, issues that they may be able to help with, um, all school counselors' emails are published, and many students and families have utilized this avenue to reach out, school counselors also had, um, office hours, so students and families could call in with any questions or concerns as needed, and Alba will move on. Our school psychologists, um, have continued to participate in eligibility and I U P meetings for students with disabilities, and in addition, they were also checking in weekly with all the students they were serving prior to the school closure, they are also available via phone or email for all students and families who may have questions or concerns, and their contact information can be found on our school websites as well, and the next slide, Alba, our student services team, so this is our school social worker, our intervention specialist, um, and our student services coordinator, they worked really hard to make sure everybody was connected, uh, they met weekly with the school counselors, uh, just to provide resources, the community resources provided on the website, um, really served families in a variety of ways, to include, um, food, clothing, and shelter resources, as well as healthcare, counseling, and psychiatric services if needed, the student services group kept abreast of any new resources by attending a variety of community team meetings, some of which are listed here, but certainly not all, um, that information gathered was shared during the weekly team meetings, and then emailed out to appropriate staff if something came along more quickly that they needed to share. Our next slide. When staff encountered situations that were beyond their expertise or their scope of work, referrals were made to the following agencies to provide additional and necessary student support or family support, and we were really appreciative of all of these services, as they did, um, take an active role in supporting our students and our families. And the next slide. So in talking about planning for next year, um, staff and students will return to school, obviously having had a variety of experiences during the stay-at-home order, so understanding how staff, students, and families are coping is critical to a successful return to school, uh, you'll be conducting a survey to determine points of stress and concern during the pandemic, coping mechanisms that they were able to use, um, that were most helpful, social experiences during social distancing, and what they missed or did not miss about being on-site for school, so that information will help us prepare and respond to staff, student, and family needs as we move forward, um, a working group is also meeting to plan professional development for staff, which we also believe is going to be critical, this is some of the things they are doing, uh, trauma-informed care training promotes feelings of physical, social, and emotional safety in students, um, adverse childhood experiences training helps staff to recognize and understand what those experiences may be, while learning strategies to reduce or eliminate their impact, and other and other topics include recognizing and responding to fear, anxiety, grief, and loss, building relationships and helping reluctant students return to school, and finally, staff wellness, including ways to practice self-care, will also be an important focus as everyone returns to work, and that is just a little bit about all of the things that our staff was able to really do during this this closure, and I hope that all of you are certainly as proud as I am of the work that they really did supporting our families and kids. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Stone, that was excellent, we really appreciate that, and, um, if there are any questions or comments, I'm going to hold off until, uh, Dr. Newman just do with entire presentation, and then we'll, um, have questions and comments then, if you all have a mind, but Dr. Newman, the floor is still yours.
Now we're going to have Dr. Saunders, who's going to give you an update on the Task Force.
I think you're mute, Dr. Saunders, we can't quite hear you. I can read your lips, but can't hear it.
All right, how about now?
Yes, perfect.
I don't give, I don't have earphones, so just, um, you know, appreciate all the excitement in the background if you hear it, so, again, uh, so I wanted to say, uh, welcome, um, to Dr. Brent, I started off with, uh, hello Chairman Williams, uh, Vice Chairwoman Kiefer, and members of the board, Dr. Newman, and welcome to Dr. Brent as well, we're excited to have you here as a member of the Manassas City Public Schools family, so excited that you'll see in the presentation, we've already added you to the Task Force, um, so looking forward to working with you, um, as we move forward, so I'll jump right into the presentation, um, Alba, I think you're moving that along for me, I just have to kind of say, it it's hard to believe that three short months ago, I actually stood in front of the board and talked about our response to the pandemic, and we were talking about potentially maybe closing the schools for, we could maybe see a week closure or something like that, and here we are today in a very different place, um, and so, you know, I think as we continue to move, we have to keep that in mind, that the situation is currently, um, changing, and it's unique in every way, uh, so to start with, the unprecedented closure of the schools at the end of the twenty-nineteen school year due to the COVID pandemic was challenging in many ways, we're so proud that Manassas City Public Schools was positioned with excellent leaders, uh, leadership, teachers, support staff, resources, board members, to really effectively address the crisis, and at this point, we're ready to begin to solidify plans to move Manassas City Public Schools forward for the twenty-twenty school year, to accomplish this, we started work on the Manassas City Public Schools Forward twenty-twenty Task Force in May, today, the governor released a phased approach for schools to return to in-person learning in a safe, equitable, and responsible manner, additionally, the state superintendent outlined a road- roadmap, a very long, hundred-and-twenty-page roadmap, for Virginia schools called Recover, Redesign, and Restart, a comprehensive plan that moves Virginia learners and educators forward, Manassas City Public Schools is, stands ready to use this guidance to continue our planning for the new school year, while we recognize we must approach this task with flexibility and patience as the situation continues to present cha-changing and unique circumstances, we also know that our planning must meet the students' needs first, ensure equitable access and adequate supports, centralized communication for all families, and develop and implement a return-to-learning plan that addresses the impact of sustained learning losses during this closure, next slide, Alba. Over the last few weeks, Manassas City Public Schools division leaders have collaborated to identify four critical actions necessary to ensure we are prepared for the twenty-twenty school year, these actions are the framework for our Task Force, and they are listed here, I'll go through each of the actions as I talk a little bit about the, um, the teams that will be working, next slide, Alba. We know that the twenty-twenty-one school year will look different, and may include any number of these scenarios, our critical action teams are developing plans for each op- option, so that we can fluidly move from one to the other depending on our needs as a community, you can see there are three return-to-school options that we are considering, or that the plans will be made around, the first is reopening school for in-person learning, um, as we've heard today, that's not necessarily likely that it will be full in-person learning, um, come August, option two is reopening school with a combination of in-person learning and distance learning, and option three is reopening school with full distance learning, I think what we are hearing today, and, um, is that option two is likely where we will begin. Next slide, Alba. As we work through the process, the Task Force structure will be providing, or the group will be providing information to Dr. Newman on a regular basis, Dave Lyon, our Director of Accountability, will act as project manager, members of the superintendent's cabinet, principals, assistant principals, and key division staff will be assigned to lead working teams and develop action plans, specific timelines, approximate costs for each of the critical action areas, while much remains uncertain, we know that engaging our Manassas City Public Schools staff is critical in this action planning. School principals will select the teachers and staffs for the Task Force members, input and feedback teams, interest forms were emailed to all staff on May twenty-second, twenty-twenty, principals reviewed those and selected and informed team members on May twenty-ninth, to date, all critical action working teams are meeting regularly, developing these actions, and providing a weekly update to the executive leadership team, these weekly updates allow for the four critical areas to identify crossover relationships and actions, and eliminate any duplicating or conflicting tasks, next slide, Alba. So the first critical action area is, um, around technology, and it will, it was that all Manassas City Public Schools students have the, have a device and adequate access to the internet by September first, twenty-twenty, um, Mr. Bobby Barrett is leading this, um, critical action team, and you can see, each of the action teams have specific principals or assistant principals assigned to them to provide a school-level, uh, look at those actions, and then additional key staff members, at the bottom, you can see these are, um, members of the input and feedback teams, those are staff members from across the division, both instructional staff and support staff. Next slide, Alba. Critical action two is around instruction, and we have, uh, identified that all Manassas City Public Schools students and staff must have the training, tools, and instructional resources necessary to make teaching, student learning, and access to social emotional supports available in any environment, and in compliance with other state or local orders, Dr. Cramp is leading up this, uh, this work, and you can see, we've had, uh, added Dr. Brent here as well, uh, we have several principals in this areas, this is the bulk of our instructional work, and additional principals covering all of the, um, grade levels, our additional key staff members are also indicated here, and then Alba, if you go to the next slide, it's a rather large team, so I couldn't fit them all on one slide, these are our staff members who have been assigned to, uh, provide input and feedback on critical action two, and again, they represent staff members across the entire division, both support staff and instructional staff. Next slide, please, critical action three is around the area of operations, Manassas City Public Schools must have the resources, equipment, and procedures to ensure learning spaces are healthy environments and compliance with state or local orders, uh, Mr. Hawkins is leading this task, uh, this critical action, with a lot of support from principals and assistant principals, and associate principal, and additional key staff members across the division, also indicated at the bottom are his, uh, members of his feedback and input team from across the division, both, uh, support and instructional staff, next slide, please, and the final action is around human resources, and it states, Manassas City Public Schools must ensure policies and procedures address the changing physical, mental, and emotional needs of all employees, Ms. Wingfield will be leading this particular critical action team, you can see again, principals and assistant principals from across the division, additional key staff, and staff members from all buildings represented, both support staff and, um, instructional staff, next slide, please, as our, uh, Task Force continues to work, uh, they are digging into those documents that were provided today by both the governor and the Department of Education, they will use those to help create action plans that will be completed, as you heard from Dr. Newman, uh, by July third, it's not necessarily means that all the, uh, tasks are done on July third, uh, we have set a task completion date by August fifteenth, and then we will provide a, an update to the school board on June twenty-third, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Saunders, very thorough, and, um, very heartened that we're putting so much time and energy into the Task Force to help our students and our staff and our community, uh, get back to school, whichever fashion they do so, um, now I'm going to ask, are there any comments or questions for Dr. Stone or for Dr. Saunders?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Well, first, Mrs. Saunders, that was very thorough, that presentation was very thorough, I really appreciate all the effort everybody has, has, um, put forth through this Task Force, um, Dr. Stone, I was curious if, and I'm trying to figure out how to articulate my question well, are you, are you, are you able to, are you keeping track, um, I realize maybe each school, each local school has to keep track, and then it kind of comes up to you, what the percentage or numbers are of how many people really need, have, have communicated or connected with the counselors, not in an academic way, but in an emotional way, that they need that emotional support?
So our schools and our student services team, um, is definitely keeping track of that, I don't have a percentage.
I don't have a percentage for you, but I can certainly get that and share it with you via email.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Albrecht.
I'm just curious to staff if we have any sense of the community's acceptance of where we're going going forward. My concern is, I just saw a thing published the other day. It was by Politico. So, you can take the tenor of it, but it was asserting that more than 40% of parents do not want their children returning to school until there's a vaccine. Now, obviously, it's a number, but there's a certain percent of the population. I think that probably does represent reality. And I didn't know where people in Manassas felt, if we had any sense of the community.
So, I don't know if Dr. Newman, either one of us can answer. So, this is a question that we actually will be talking about in the summit tomorrow, I think. This will be some of the conversation as to what percentage of our families would not want to be sending their students back, as well as what percentage of staff perhaps may not be returning. You know, we have, I would say, have received a lot of feedback that our families want to come back and that our students want to be in the schools. And so, you know, we'll probably get a better feel for that as we start to develop those plans and share out the information as to what school will look like. I think it's kind of hard to tell that right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Demaria. Dr. Saunders, I see that September 1 is the date for that everybody would have internet connection or shooting for that. All tasks will be completed by August 15th. Are we delaying our calendar, our start of school? Or if we, if we open completely online or partial, are we going to be delaying the start of school? Because those two are kind of past where we were planning on starting.
I'll take that, Dr. Saunders. Basically, we are not proposing at this time to delay the start of school. September 1 date, they dropped it, end date. We're going to try to get all those devices to those students the first week of school.
Okay, that works for me. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Dr. Saunders and Dr. Stone, thank you for those thorough presentations. I really appreciate them, and the board does as well. We have a lot of work to do, but we're ready for it. So, thank you very much. Dr. Newman, do you have anything else to add on the update? You're good? Okay, Dr. Brent, anything else you want to say and contributions?
Thanks again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, looking at my agenda here, I believe we're on to board member comments. And Mrs. Garza switches them up on me sometimes, so I'm just going to read the orders she put them in. So, we'll start off with Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And while Rodney and VSB are offline, it was really a pleasure to see his face again. And I appreciate the resolution. Last I checked, my term is still up. It doesn't expire till the 31st of December. And I fully intend to keep on kicking and going. So, I'm sure some other people are probably going to talk about the political unrest in our nation. And I think we all share a similar, or I hope we all share a very similar sentiment and appreciation for where we are and where we're not. And as kind of a senior person, it's disheartening for me to watch the evening news and think that I'm reliving the 60s. I thought we had gotten better than that. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Stevens.
Thank you, Chairman Williams. Mr. Albrecht, I'm not going to say anything yet tonight because you have till December 31st. I've already learned a lot from you. I look forward to learning quite a bit more before you leave us. You are a wealth of knowledge and information. A few years ago, a friend of mine said to me, Lisa, you can't go wrong if you speak from your heart. So, tonight, I just want to take a minute and speak from my heart. Black Lives Matter. Black students matter. Black teachers, administrators and staff matter. Black parents matter. You matter. Black community members matter. There comes a time when it's important to stop talking and start listening, start learning, and that moment is now. My commitment to you, to the students, to the staff, to the community is to listen, to learn and to be the ally you need. I may miss step or stumble, but this journey of learning is in hopes of building a better future for you and for all of us. So, thank you, and thank you for letting me be a part of this board and for everything we've done so far.
Thank you very much, Miss Stevens. Mrs. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, Mrs. Stevens, you said that perfectly well, perfectly well. I couldn't add or make it even better. Dr. Brent, welcome. I'm excited that you are here. You have big shoes to fill. Dr. Stone was my two boys' principal. So, we are so used to seeing her wonderful face, but it sounds like to me that we are in very good hands going forward. And I'm excited to see everything that you pursue here at Manassas City Public Schools. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Seberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome to Dr. and Mrs. Brent, and congratulations to Scott. Lisa, I echo your thoughts on Black Lives Matter. Very important, and I'm looking forward to making some progress in our conversations and policies as we go forward. I also wanted to remind anybody that happens to be on the call tonight that tomorrow, the health department is conducting free COVID-19 testing at Osborne parking lot. And the lot's going to open at 8:00, and the testing's going to begin at 9:00. There's only 400 tests, but you don't need symptoms to be tested. So, testing's an important part of going through this pandemic. If you feel like you need a test, please go get one for free. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Miss Seberg. Next, Mr. Demaria.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Brent, Mrs. Brent, welcome to our family. People have warned you about me. Mr. Albrecht, we're going to do this in November. But for everything that you've done for VSB, I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much. And I've learned a lot from you two of what to do and, more importantly, what not to do. Black Lives Matter. Mrs. Stevens said it quite well. We had a rally at the museum last weekend. And I need to speak about our chief of police. Chief Keen is spectacular. The last two weeks or three weeks of this stuff, this man has done everything right. He's said everything right. I am so proud that he is our chief of police. And if everybody would have the same attitude that Chief Keen does, we'd be in a good place. So, I need to thank him immensely for what Doug has done for us and for our entire community. And he didn't sugarcoat anything, and he just said it like it was. Chairman Williams, you too, sir. I watched you on TV or on the computer at Walmart. I watched you in person at the museum. I read what you've written. I'm proud that you're our chairman, and you've done a fine job representing us. Thank you, sir.
I really appreciate that, Mr. Demaria. Thank you. And next is going to be me. I don't like speaking a lot, but I said more than I usually say. You know, blog post that I posted on Facebook that blew up in a good way. Got a lot of good feedback from it. Also did a posting on Medium and got feedback from that. And in fact, UVA called my daughter and I last night and did an interview with us, which they just posted online today and will be in the UVA magazine tomorrow, talking about a lot of these issues. So, I'm not going to repeat what I said there, but you can read it if you're interested. I am blessed to be a part of this community, and I would do my best to try to represent us in a positive fashion. And I want to do what's best for all students. That's my heart. All students are different. I do see students for whom they are. And we have students of all races and ethnicities. And I truly honestly love them all, what was best for them. But also, when I read it, we treat it equitably. So, if you have a second, please read my post, and it'll probably express what I want to say far better than I can say in person. And to Dr. Brent, welcome to you. And Mrs. Brent, we're glad to have you part of the family. As Mr. Demaria said, we are a family. Again, I'm repeating myself about something I said earlier, but Dr. Saunders, Dr. Stone, Mr. Hawkins. I know you all do a lot of work, because I talk to Dr. Newman almost every day. And you all in the background, certainly the publicity or the praise that you should get. But I know you're working hard for our kids, so I appreciate you. And Missy and Dr. Stone, it's like she's always here, so it's going to be hard not having her here. But I truly appreciate you, and we don't say that enough to the folks who do hard work. But I want to let you know that I appreciate you. And Ms. Garza also in the room, I appreciate you as well. So, I will end there and pass it along to Mrs. Kiefer. Mrs. Kiefer, give the last word.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Brent, Mrs. Brent, welcome. We're so happy to expand the family and can't wait to get to know you both. Mr. Albrecht, I'm going to save all my stuff for, you know, November, December for you, but you know how I feel about you. You have been a steadfast ally of the city, of our children and of each of us. And for that, you deserve even more than a proclamation in your name, so we'll make sure we treat you well. You know, everybody has kind of touched upon this, and there's no doubt that it's undoubtedly a difficult time for our country, particularly, probably amongst the toughest that some of us have seen ever or just in a long time. The world's been faced with, I guess you would call it, a perfect storm in 2020 between Corona, racism and inequitable treatment of people, and the economic downturn. But we as a society and we as Manassas City Public Schools continue to do our best during these very uncertain times. A few weeks back, Mr. Albrecht stated, quote, "We are in good hands to weather this storm." With Dr. Newman and his entire MCPS team across this great city, I too agree, we are in the best of hands to face any storms that may come our way. For five years, I have watched my Manassas City Public Schools family, the leadership, the staff and this board, always look to do what's right for our students and our community. I have been proud of the progress we have made and know that this momentum will continue. I want to thank the city of Manassas for allowing me to be of service to you and to our children. Tonight, I am announcing that I will not be seeking reelection to the school board in November. To my fellow board members and other boards before you, with whom I've served, I thank you for what you do and for who you are as human beings. It's been an honor to serve alongside each and every one of you. But like Mr. Albrecht said, during his announcement, you have me 110% until December 31st. For some of you, it may feel like you are stuck with me until then, but we shall weather that storm as well. Our children are the future of the Manassas City community. And it is incumbent upon each and every one of us to figure out our own role and our own job in making sure this happens. I will continue to be a strong voice and advocate to ensure all students have equitable access to the best possible education. That will never, ever change. And I will always be of service to Manassas. And thank you for your placing your confidence in me for so many years. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Kiefer. I will leave it at that for now. Next on the agenda is a closed session motion. So, may I have a motion, please?
Sir, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-37, Paragraph 2 of the Code of Virginia 1950, is amended for the following purpose: Discussion, student expulsion hearings and discussion of candidates for the school board student representative for the 2020-2021 school year, STUE 1920-06 through STUE 1920-12 inclusive.
Is that second by Seberg?
Kiefer.
Kiefer, okay, thank you. My eyes were looking at the motion. Motion by Mrs. Kiefer, excuse me, that the school board of the city of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711 Part A, Paragraph 1 and Paragraph 2 of the Code of Virginia 1950, is amended for the following purposes: Discussion of student expulsion hearings and discussion of candidates for the school board student representatives for the 2020-2021 school year. Discussion of the school board's student representatives, 1920-12. Goes all the way through, STUE 1920-12. And for a vote, we need a roll call vote. So, Ms. Garza, please take a roll call vote for the closed session motion, please.
My chair, woman Kiefer?
Hi.
Demaria?
I can't figure this thing out. I.
Hi.
Mrs. Kiefer?
Hi.
Mrs. Williams? Mrs. Stevens?
Hi.
The eyes have it 7:00. We will enter closed session. And in order to do that, which is where we've done this before, we will have to exit from this meeting and enter into a Zoom meeting for the closed session. So, if you all go to your emails, click on the Zoom link, and I shall see you shortly.
Good luck.